If you are not a registered voter, you have to be sitting in the front row. Is there any other? I realize that there are a lot of people who would like to get out of here very quickly tonight, for some reason, I don't know why. And I will do everything I can to move this meeting along, and I ask for your assistance. Okay? I'd like to go over a few things. How we're gonna do things tonight. The first being, I'm gonna ask the... Some of our children from Millville Elementary came here tonight to assist us in our pledge of belief, and I would like to ask them to come up, please. Those who came to help us, please come up.
Libby?
Libby, Libby what?
Priya.
Libby Priya, and?
Ethan Stammen.
I wanna thank these children for coming out tonight and helping us. There you all stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I wanna bother you once more and ask you to please stand for a moment of silence for all of our troops, for serving at home and abroad, and those who have given their lives in this country. Thank you. I'm gonna go over the rules as we go along. In order to speak, please raise your hand and get permission from myself, the moderator, to speak. You cannot make a motion unless you've been recognized by the moderator. I wanna reiterate, you cannot just cry out something. Everyone has an opinion and a right to express their opinion. Listen to their remarks, and you just might learn something. And remember, you do not have to agree with them, but they have a right to have their own opinion, and they also have the right to express that opinion. They don't have to agree with yours either. Respect each other. Be courteous. I will not tolerate outcries, name-calling, or derogatory remarks towards other speakers, groups, boards, committees, or attendees. If a person continues to cause problems in the meeting and disrupt this meeting, I will ask that he be removed. I do have that authority under the common laws of Massachusetts. In order to move this meeting forward quickly as possible, and also ensure that everyone knows what's going on, I am going to read the article first. Okay? I will then say, the moderator will entertain a motion to move the question in the words of the article, and I will need someone to do that. The financial articles will be moved by the Finance Committee. Once it's been moved, it has to be seconded. Once it's been seconded, I'm gonna ask for the recommendation of the Finance Committee and of the Board of Selectmen. Okay? We will try to move these as quickly as possible. If you... I'm gonna ask, once the question has been moved and seconded, and the recommendations of both boards have been given, I'm gonna ask for anyone who wants to speak on that article. Please come down to the microphone. Please say your name and your address. Limit your remarks to three minutes. I now have a timer. I'll call you at three minutes. Okay? Then the next person. I will try to ensure that each one, each speaker, has enough time to express themselves, and that the members of the town meeting have ample time to understand what they're saying and what's going on. Any questions at all? All right, let's get started. Article number one. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from any available funds a sum of money for the payment of unpaid bills of previous fiscal years pursuant... Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. To see if the town will vote to authorize that any motion or amendment to increase any monetary articles or line items as proposed by the Finance Committee presented at this town meeting shall be out of order unless such motion or amendment states the source of funding, the line item, or article that will be reduced by the same amount or take any other action thereto. Is there a motion to move the question in the words of the article?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends I so move the article as written.
There a second? Motion been made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation?
We recommend the article as written.
Board of Selectmen, your recommendation?
Excuse me. Board of Selectmen recommends I so move the article as written.
Anyone else wanna speak on this article? There being none, I call for a vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The article passes, it is a vote I so declare. Article number two. Prior unpaid bills, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer any available funds, a sum of money for the payment of unpaid bills of previous fiscal years pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 64, or take any other action relative thereto. Is there a motion to move the article in the words of the... Move the question in words of the article?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends I so move the article. Be approved as written and total sum of $1,750.90 be transferred from the encumbrances account number 0001-199578000.
Is there a second? Motion been made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
We recommend it as written.
Recommendation of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends article as written.
Anyone else wanna speak on the article? There being none, I call for a vote. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, it is a vote I so declare. Article number three. Replenish reserve fund. To see if the town will vote to transfer from the final reimbursement payment received from the construction grant awarded to the Blackstone Millville Regional School District for the construction and equitney... Equitney of the Millville Elementary School, the sum of $32,000, to replenish the Finance Committee Reserve Fund, account number 0001-131-578000, for emergency funds allotted for the emergency Millville School-Oil Tank, account number 0001-300-578014, or take any other action relative thereto. The moderator will entertain a motion to move the article in the words of the article.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends I so move the article as written.
Article's been moved and seconded. Motion been made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation?
We recommend it as written.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends the article as written.
Any other discussion? Anyone else? There being none, call for a vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? The ayes have it, it is a vote I so declare. Article number four. Fund Millville Elementary School Water Project. To see if the town will vote to transfer from the final reimbursement payment received from the construction grant awarded to the Millville Mil... Millville... Excuse me. Blackstone Millville Regional School District for the construction and equitney of the Millville Elementary School, the sum of $62,738 to fund line item entitled MES Water Account 0301000530942, or take any other action relative thereto. Is there a motion to move the question in words of the article?
The Finance Committee recommends I so move the article as written.
Motion been made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
We recommend it as written.
Board of Selectmen, recommendation?
We recommend it as written.
Any other discussion? Does everybody understand this article? Anyone who does not understand it? There being no one else with a question, I call for a vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? The ayes have it, it is a vote I so declare. Article number five. Fiscal year 2013 budget adjustment, Town Clerk. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from any available funds, a sum of $5,400 to supplement the line item entitled Town Clerk Clerical, within the fiscal year 2013 town budget approved under Article 15 of the Annual Town Meeting Warren on May 14, 2012, or take any other action relative thereto. Is there a motion to move the question in words of the article?
Mr. Moderator, I would like to move, in the words of the article, this article five, to transfer...
You got it done.
Okay.
You just did it. Is there a second? Second. Who seconded? Name please.
Norman Thor.
Town Clerk, did you get who seconded?
I sure did.
Okay. Recommendation from the... The motion been made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee does not recommend this article.
Recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen does not recommend this article.
Explanation from Town Clerk, is it your... Is it your article? You can explain it, please.
If you look in the warrant, you can see that I've explained that as of the end of this year, there will be no money at all for any clerical help from my office. I probably was short-sighted myself when I didn't ask for more money at the annual town meeting. That's where you generally do it. But because the library was on the chopping block, the senior center was on the chopping block, and I was very cruel in what I asked from my department. And I didn't ask for enough. If you don't pass this article, I will have no clerical help. As it is, because we reduced hours at the town hall because of having... I don't have a town assistant town clerk that works Monday through Thursday as I did with Amy Sutton who was there. I currently have an assistant town clerk, Diane Lockwood, who is working 12 hours a week, and we still can't get caught up. I need at least 16 hours a week of clerical because the demands of the office and to serve the people in this space, I really need this, and I ask you to please pass this article so I can do the work of the Town Clerk's office. Thank you very much.
Anyone else who would like to speak? Norm?
I'm Norman Thor, 25 Main Street. I agree with Marsha, and I'm familiar with the operations of the Town Clerk's office. I was an investigator 15 years when I was on the road. Every time I needed anything in the town, the first place I would go was the Town Clerk's office. Because the Town Clerk's office, second to the Town Administrator, is probably the most important office in the town. Anything you want or you need, you have to... You don't have to, but the Town Clerk can point you in that direction or help you. She's responsible for issuing all licenses, and you can tell the tenor of a town by walking into a town hall. The first thing you should see is the Town Clerk. You walk into the Town Hall of Millville, there is no Town Clerk because her hours are not the hours when the public are available, except on a Wednesday night. Now, not everybody is available on Wednesday night. Not everybody is available in the daytime. She does need assistance. Now, they talk about setting a precedent here. We set precedents all the time. In fact, if you look in the words of the Finance Committee, and I will read to you, recommending this article this time would be precedent-setting, it would not be in the best fiscal interest of the town given that we face uncertain fiscal conditions in the near future. You could say that about any article that's on this warrant. We have uncertain fiscal futures. But, in the face of that, you still need a Town Clerk. They go on to say, although the work of the Town Clerk's office must go on in order to best serve the town residents and fulfill town government obligations, included unfunded mandates, the Finance Committee is sympathetic to the Town Clerk. Now, if the town, if it has to go on, who are they gonna get to do it? Now, in order to go on, they tell you, you better come up and tell where you're gonna get the money if you wanna amend an article, but they don't tell her where she's gonna get the help to help her maintain the best interests of the town according to the Massachusetts statutes. So I would think it would be unquestioned in the best interests of you people, of the town as a whole, that you appropriate this money. The money is there, it's coming from the ambulance fund, it's not an encumbrance, and if any office in town deserves it, it's the office of the Town Clerk. Thank you very much.
One moment, please. Just to correct something in order to coincide with Article One. Marsha, you need to tell us where the money's coming from.
Oh, I was...
And how much?
I was about to say that it comes from the ambulance. Ambulance receipts reserved in the amount of $5,100.
All right. Anyone else who would like to speak? Mrs. Davis?
Marsha Davis, 8 Quaker Street, Millville. I sympathize with the Town Clerk, but I sympathize with all our departments in town. Our secretary administrator's secretary has been running her office on a deficit. The Health Department has been running their office on a deficit. Nobody has enough hours because of the financial problems that our town faces. And this will set a precedence. The time for establishing budgets is at main town meetings. Granted, we can address anything at a special town meeting, but what is the purpose of having a budget if you don't have to stick to it? We come in in May, we're presented with a budget, we vote on that budget, and we expect our town leaders and our people that work with those budgets to stay within. Yes, emergencies occur, or perhaps we might have to step outside of what we've approved. But I agree with the Finance Committee. This is, if we start with precedents, then why bother having budgets? Then you just come in in May and you just say, "Oh, I think I can run my office on this amount of money, and if it works out that I can't, then I'll come back in December and get more money." I mean, how many people in the audience here run their house budgets that way? A budget is something that you say, "I'm going to run my home, my town, my budget, my office, whatever, on this amount of money." And the other problem, the thing that concerns me is this ambulance fund. This is not a savings account that we can just use to provide money for things that we, you know, like positions and things like that. If I understand the ambulance funds, this is kind of a savings account to use for emergencies and for items that are coming down the pike. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Bowman?
Ellen Bowman, 98 Brown Street. I seem to recollect that we did have one time money in the budget for clerical help in the town hall. Now, what happened to that money? Okay. It's... So we do have clerical help for the Town Clerk?
That's what the clerical help word is being figured out currently. But those hours for that position have increased, which...
Well, better still, why have they... Why have they decreased? I'm kind of confused as to where that clerical help is appropriated at this point. Is it being shared with the executive secretary's needs versus the Town Clerk? I'm confused with it.
That's something that the Town Clerk and the executive secretary would have to speak to. Specifically as to where the time is being allocated. We can tell you where the money's being allocated, but we can't tell you where the time's being allocated.
So who has jurisdiction over where the time is allocated?
The manager of those offices.
Okay.
Managers of...
I'm just confused because I know that we did have money in the clerical...
And it's still there, but the argument here today is that that wasn't enough.
Is there an answer?
Let me clarify something.
Yeah, I know that...
I know you're confused.
Yes.
Let's see if I can clear it up for you.
Okay.
Whose position... Whose clerical position are we talking about? Town Clerk's clerical position? Or the Executive Secretary or Town Hall's clerical position?
My...
I'm asking, Marsha.
Okay, excuse me. Right now, I'm ask... Excuse me. I'm asking for funding for the town assistant town clerk, clerical for me. When I took this office a little over, almost three years ago, there was an assistant town clerk who worked Monday through Thursday, nine to four. I believed, I hadn't checked, but I believed that she was available not only for counterwork for my department, but also help for town hall things. Now, as of this fall, things have changed in the town hall, and that position changed, and Helen needed a clerical person for the business office that was full-time, the four hours a week, four days a week. When I found out that the part of that position that was allocated to the Town Clerk was an hour and a half a week, that's like 20 minutes a day. That was my fraction of that. Now, Amy was doing a lot more because Helen allowed it, but it got so that she needed that person to do more work for her. So the funding was for the assistant town clerk, an hour and a half a week. That's absurd. I can't... I just... You barely open a couple of pieces of mail for 20 minutes a day. So the clerical work and anything that was supposed to be for my office has been backlocking and backlogging, not attended to, just left, then left, then left, and it's got to be a critical mass. You pay people, pay me only $10,000 a year, which was supposed to be like maybe about $10, $12 dollars a week. I'm there about $25 dollars a week. I've got two college degrees, I really am pretty good at picking up a thing, and I cannot keep up. I can't. And I can't be nailed down to count hours too because I've got so much that I need to do that's required by Mass. General Law and things like elections and town meetings and vitals and, you know, all kinds of things required by the state. So the position has grown geometrically. What I'm responsible for, and I... Therefore, there's also more things needed currently, and it needs to be... You need to be able to be done right. And it has not been up to date, and we're trying to do that. The young woman that I have now working for me is very computer savvy, setting up programs with access that's going to make the programs like dog licenses and street listings...
Bring it, go close, Marsha.
Okay, I'm sorry. But she's very, very good, and I need her. I need her. Can you run the office with someone for 20 minutes a day?
Okay. So the question is, is the position, the clerical position, is the Town Clerk's clerical position? And what is being said, if I understand it correctly, is there's not enough hours or money left in that position or in that line item, account number, to pay her to the end of the fiscal year? Is that correct?
That's true.
All right. That's what it is.
It just seems a little complex to me, but if the Town Clerk, which I feel is very accomplished in her position and very conscientious, if she's asking for more money, because it's definitely because she needs it, and it certainly isn't... She didn't plan to come back and ask for more money. It's just the way it happened. And I think that her conscience is telling her that she has to inform the taxpayers of this, and then they'll decide.
Thank you. Norm?
We seem to get hung up on this word precedent. We have these meetings because there are things that come up to present a precedent. And that's why we have these meetings. We don't have these meetings to throw money around. God knows we don't have the money to throw around. But here you have a Town Clerk who actually has explained to you exactly the position she's in. Now, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to ask a question up to the Executive Secretary.
Go ahead.
Mrs. Quaffey, do you or do you not agree with the summation given by the Town Clerk as to her needs for additional help?
I absolutely... I absolutely agree with the Town Clerk.
The reason I ask this question is because the Executive Secretary works hand-in-hand with the Town Clerk. She has more knowledge of the needs of the Town Clerk's office than the Selectmen, the Finance Committee, or anybody else in this town. They work... They used to work on a day-to-day basis. They can't anymore because the Town Clerk can't be on the clock that much. She's off the clock more than she's on the clock. Now, she didn't plan... Excuse me. She didn't plan on this. So the word precedent, in this particular case, is a non-stop because this was not... because this was not something that she entered into knowing that at some point down the line she was going to lose help. So what she's asking you today is to help her run, and in fact, the final such, the final sentence on Article, oh, I lost it.
Article five.
Article five. The final sentence from the recommendation of the finance committee is, "The finance committee is sympathetic with the town clerk's request and defers the matter relative to this article to the will of the town," which is you people, not the finance committee, not the board of selectmen. But again, less than one minute, Marcia. So I ask you, take into consideration exactly what the town clerk is explaining to you, and keep that in your mind with your vote, because as of now, the town clerk's situation in town is in fact an emergency situation. Mr. Moderator?
General in the back, had his hand up, hold it over, come down, please.
My name is John Lockwood on 15 Oak Street. Diane Lockwood is my mother, that's not why I'm here, but she was kind of why I'm here. But she comes home from working in the town clerk's office for 12 hours a week, and she tells me that she could work another 15 hours a week and they still wouldn't be able to caught up. She's trying as hard as she can to create databases and help the town and collect more revenue from dog licenses and all the other licenses that need to be paid up to the town. She seems to think that even she can't keep up with the town clerk, I believe that they need these funds to keep the office running. Thank you.
Anybody else? One more, ma'am.
I just have one question, the town clerk. Would you please clarify, you said here that if approved, some projects could then be kept in-house rather than using vendors for the services. This would save money and tailor the work to meet the specific needs. So could you please tell me what projects that could be then kept in-house that we would not be using vendors for? And what would the savings be?
This is an example of one of the pieces that we would do at house. We take the information from this, from the state computer, then we send that information to a printer, like in the past we've used LHS, I'm not sure where they're located. They print this, they print this out, they send a copy, we go through it, and then it's several hundreds of dollars for their service to do this. Now Diane tells me, since she knows how to deal with all these, all kinds of things in the state computer, because she's so techie, that we could do this ourselves, make it even a different size or, you know, a larger size, print it a little different, put information on here that would be a little better, add fractions of a cost because it would only be for the paper that we would be using at the town hall. So we wouldn't have to pay, now this, that would, this is just one example, but a lot of things that we have to do, that we send out other things to vendors, and that's what I mean by that, this would be something. Also, another thing we send out is street census. We do that around January, February. If Mass General Law requires that every household in the panel of receives this piece of paper, and you're supposed to return it back to us, and if you don't, you give me again, because I'm required to do that. Now, it costs hundreds and hundreds of dollars to print these things. Then it costs hundreds and hundreds of dollars to stuff them in envelope and have them sent out. We have a service that does that because I'm, I can't do it alone. With Diane, she will print them all out, she will, they're volunteers to do the stuffing, and so they're volunteers because she's good at rounding up people. So that would save hundreds of dollars. Also, we can, since she has a special program with the dog licenses, we'll be able to put that rate in the right one for the right person, so it could be individualized. So there's a lot of things, and there probably be more once I can tap into...
All right, that's it, folks. We're going to call for a vote.
Mr. Moderator, the chairman of the finance committee has had his hand up several times.
Oh, yes.
That's why I'm the moderator. I see him. All right, I think we've beat this article down, and now I want to call for a vote. All those in favor of approving Article Five, say if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, it is a vote, and I so declare. Article Six, fiscal year 2013 budget adjustment, fire department. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from any available funds to sum of $6,000 to supplement the fire department line item entitled Fire Hydrants. Account number 0001-220-5890-01. Within the fiscal year 2013 town budget, approved under Article 15 of the annual town meeting warrant on May 14, 2012, or take any other action relative thereto. Moderator entertain a motion to move Article Six in the words of the article?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends an ISO move, the article be approved as written, and the amount of $6,000 be transferred from public safety reserves.
Can you recommend the article?
Yes.
Board of Select's recommendation?
Board of Select also recommends the article as written.
Motion's been made and seconded. Anyone want to speak on it? There being no one, I call for a vote. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, it is a vote, and I so declare. Article Seven, capital, fund capital budget, fire department, turnout gear. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from any available funds to sum of $5,500 to fund the capital budget line item entitled Fire Turnout Gear. Account number 0001-930-530916, or take any action relative thereto. Moderator entertain a motion to move the article in words of the article?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends an ISO move, the article be approved as written, and the amount of $7,500 be transferred from public safety reserves.
Recommendation for the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen also approves this article as written.
Anyone want to speak to the article? There's a vote.
I just have a quick question, I'm sure that the finance committee can answer. At the annual town meeting under Article Eight, we voted to fund fire turnout gear and the amount was $6,250. That was from the ambulance receipts fund. Is this article over and above this one?
Yes, there's approximately 25 firemen, and as of last year, all of their turnout gear was expiring, there's actually an expiration date on it. It is the actual coats and pants that protect them from fires.
I know that, yeah.
And this is over and above, and we're hoping to actually get onto a regular schedule of replacing those a few at a time.
Okay, because we just voted this in the last meeting.
But that was only for two, this is for three.
I'm wondering why we didn't ask for more at that point.
I don't know, I guess the chief didn't want to be greedy at that time.
Okay, that's nice of you, but thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Richard Stearns, 28 Muldoon Court. My only question is, not only the problem with this money, is maybe a question to the finance committee as, why is this, I don't want to repeat this stuff, but why is this no more precedent-setting or any less precedent-setting than what the town clerk just requested? There was an amount of money that was asked for, we're saying she didn't want to be greedy, but she was setting precedent, and we're saying that the fire chief didn't want to be greedy, but now he's asking for more money. What was the reasoning behind that and the precedent, that being so concerning versus something like this being so...
The finance committee own reserve.
It's on. Go pull it up. Yeah?
The money...
It's not on.
It is. The money that's being requested for it to come from is public safety reserves, which is a fund that was put in place specifically to fund these kind of minor capital-type expenditures, air bottles and, you know, extinguishers and the turnout gear. My own, from my own personal answer to you, is that fund wasn't, there wasn't enough money in that fund at that time to fund this amount.
Okay.
So it's a constantly growing thing from our receipts from the ambulance runs, so we kind of have to take it where it comes.
I understand, but that's not what the article, the article is written just says from any available funds, just as Article Five, so...
And within the motion, it specifies where it's going to come from.
All our financial order have that wording in there from any available...
Understood, but per Article One, we now have to indicate that, so is all future ones actually going to indicate where the funds actually are coming from rather than just saying any available?
It always exists within the motion.
Oh, it does, I'm sorry. For the public safety reserves. All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? There being none. Call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. The ayes have it, it is a vote, and I so declare. Article Eight. Now, this is going to change just a little bit, and you'll understand why once I start. Okay, and I'll explain it. Article Eight, fund capital budget highway department truck. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, and/or transfer from any available funds to sum of $63,000 to fund the capital budget line item entitled Highway Dump Truck, account number 0001-930-530918, or take any other action relative thereto. The moderator will entertain a motion to move the question in the words of the article.
Mr. Moderator?
Go ahead.
The finance committee recommends an ISO move that the town appropriates $63,000 to pay costs of the capital budget line item entitled Highway Dump Truck, account number 0001-930-5309-18.
Paul, stop. Let's move the article, if you want to amend the article, we'll do that in a second.
Mr. Moderator, this motion has to be made very specifically for legal purposes. This is the motion.
That is not the motion that's on the warrant article. Town council.
Mr. Moderator, this is a warrant article, this is a cleared warrant, town council?
Yep.
So I take rather than, you have to accept this as a substitution. Rather than the motion as printed in the document.
Based on the advice of town council, I'll, the moderator will accept a modified motion.
I'll start from the beginning.
Thank you.
I take the motion that the town appropriate $63,000 to pay costs of the capital budget line item entitled Highway Dump Truck, account number 0001-930-5309-18, and all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, Front Season 9, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bond and/or notes of the town therefore.
There's a second.
Second. Mr. Moderator, would I be able to give you a copy of that, please?
Yes. Motion's been made and seconded. Does everyone understand? We're accepting a replacement here on Article Eight in order to comply with our bond laws and our bonding company, is that correct?
As you thought, if they put out the vote, you should have a recorded vote of at least two-thirds, and it matters unanimous, if you could declare it as unanimous, then we'll have that for the record.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Recommendation, if yours is right to approve.
The finance committee does recommend this article.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen also recommends this article as read.
Anyone have questions about this article? Jerry? Mr. Penn?
Jerry Finn, 47 Grove Street. So if I understand this correctly, what we're going to do now is, we're going to go to the state, we're going to ask them to lend us the money, we're going to put a bond issue out there, and we'll be paying back that bond issue over time.
Yes, it's three equal installments for the next three years.
Where is the money going to be coming from for those three equal installments over the next three years?
It will be added and funded within the budget through taxation.
So will be a taxated, a taxation that we'll actually have to be paying for this, for this particular bond issue that we have?
The next three years.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that everybody understood that's where it's coming from. It's not, it's an encumbrance that the town's going to have to bear over time for the next three years, we'll all have to pay for this fund.
That's correct.
Correct? Thank you.
My question is for Iowa Saver. Do you have a rough estimate of hourly savings running this truck on the road versus the outside car traffic? And the average hours it would be on the road as, say, a six-inch storm?
To what end is this a comparison? It goes back to 2011, 2012 winter season. If we would have had this truck, the savings for that truck alone, you see the total on the right-hand column. So far this year, if that truck would have been on the road, to date, we would have had about $1,500 savings for the amount of time that's been spent. Right now, we're paying about $90 an hour for a subcontracted tractor truck. We're going to be paying about $20 an hour with fuel and the cost of the vehicle being estimated at a 12-year life expectancy of the truck, which is about $1,950 per hour.
Yeah, I mean, I knew the answer, but I just...
No, answer, no answer. Anyone else have any questions? Sense, we need a, yes, ma'am?
Jennifer Cormier, Chestnut Hill Road. Since the attachment says it does include gas and maintenance, and that would be part of the vendor's toll but not the town toll, are there any estimates of the differential to do with gas and maintenance? Thank you.
Why, I just gave you a total of about $20 per hour. Because since this spreadsheet was put together, we have had our first truck on the road, and I have been able to come up with a gas rate which comes up to about $1.50 per hour for the vehicle.
But the total, I said, what is the...
Correct.
You've got $9,000 on one side, what's the $1,600?
I have a follow-up question.
The totals at the bottom, you've got $9,000 and change here.
That is what the town will spend in 2011, 2012 for that one truck.
So we asked her, I want the $1,600 and change, what does that mean?
That, that is what the town would have spent.
No, with gas and maintenance. I'm asking for with gas and maintenance.
You'd have to take the hours and add that to this, this spreadsheet. The gas is possibly just about $1.50 per hour. So you can take the hours and add $1.50 to that. To the total hours.
So take the hours column that's not total for us.
Correct.
Multiply that by $1.50.
Correct. Mill is, uh, in the past not had any of their own equipment for snow and ice. Um, they, in the past have entertained, tried doing some sanding. It didn't work, it fell apart. Um, now we have finally this year have a fully equipped truck with a snow plow, with a sander. Uh, it has been out, uh, four times. The contractor has gone out, that truck has been on the road. Uh, contractor has also gone home, that truck stayed on the road to finish up to subsidize the cost to the taxpayers.
Brian, one more question, but I just want to clarify for everybody out, sitting out here. Um, is this $63,000 does include a stainless steel sander and stainless steel plow? Am I correct?
That is correct. Um, the truck is going to be fully equipped, plow, sander, dump body, uh, roll cover, everything on the truck to go on the road.
Uh, Brian, let me ask you one question. I, so I think, maybe I'm still confused. The $9,084.95 under vendor total, that is, that is the total of that, of that column, is that correct?
That is correct.
And that, that includes the vendor charging you or his operator, his vehicle, and any, any fuel and what, and insurance?
Correct.
So we don't, you don't have a figure of what it costs total per hour for that, do you? Was he, he built you a rate of an hour?
He, he gives us a rate, his rate is $88 an hour. $88 per hour.
Okay.
This truck with fuel and the expense of the truck to break it down per hour is coming out to about $1,950 per hour.
Okay.
Versus his $88 an hour.
All right, does that clarify things over there?
That is, that is including the $63,000, giving a 12-year life expectancy and breaking the rate down into the hours of the truck.
Okay. So we're going to be paying 19 some odd cents versus $88.
Dollars, dollars.
Dollars.
Decents.
$19, some odd, $19 some odd cents versus $88 an hour.
Correct.
There's your savings, okay. Yeah, I hope I made that a little clearer. Yes.
Great, we're plus 51, we're flat rate. If we're going to pay this by taxation, how much is the average bill going to go up?
It'll be within our two and a half maximum limit.
How much, how much is going to go up?
Yeah.
This won't affect it directly at all. It'll be within the, within the tax limits. This isn't, it's not an override that is over and above.
So basically what we're saying is our budget going to go up to a half percent no matter what? This is included.
What it's also going to do is it's going to reduce our snow and ice costs, which have classically been absolutely ridiculously expensive. Yes, and the numbers on the spreadsheet are based on last winter, which was a very mild winter. So if you expound these out to a heavier winter, the cost savings is going to be realized much more significantly.
March 20th, Quaker Street. Um, Brian, am I correct in understanding that this is going to, that we're going to, this is going to be a multi-use vehicle now? I mean, it'll be a snow plow, it'll be a dump truck, it'll be a, so we'll use it all year round. We only have one dump truck because the other one is not working, so we need two dump trucks. I mean, is this, is, am I getting this right?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Right now, we have two vehicles. One of them is, uh, not on the road anymore at this time due to, uh, falling apart from the underneath. Uh, the expense to fix it, um, is very large. It's not roadworthy, they're asking inspection. Um, it is a pickup truck. I, as a highway surveyor, I don't see the use or the means for having a pickup truck at this time. Uh, the dump truck, we will be able to utilize year-round, um, along with the street sweeping, uh, when we need to haul that material. Um, working along with the fire department, Fire Hydrants. All of that is, we pay subcontractors. When we start utilizing some of our own equipment, the savings is going to be across the board, not just in snow and ice. Snow and ice was used because that is the largest expense to the town. Uh, 2010, 2011, I was not the highway surveyor. The town mill expended over $220,000 in snow and ice. Uh, this past year in 2011, 12, which in short, in comparison, the total number was in excess of $80,000, um, for snow and ice. That number is going to drop dramatically by having your own equipment uh, within the town for the future use. Uh, so coming out of taxation, you're going to see it on the other side of not having to put that money, for the snow and ice coming in, it will come in.
There was one other question thrown out, never, never answered, about additional insurance and fuel. So we're taking one truck off the road only because the state is mandating it. And so that would be, then we'll be putting another truck back on. So we're not adding another insurance policy.
Anyone else? All right, this takes two-thirds vote. On this vote, I want to ask the people, when you vote, to stand up so I can get a visualization that we have two-thirds or not. All those in favor of the article, please stand up. Thank you, all. Can you sit down? All those opposed to the article, please stand up. The ayes have it, it is a vote, I so declare. Ah, yes. Madam Town Clerk, please, please indicate that the Article Eight was voted on and we had a majority, a unanimous vote.
We had a majority vote of over 95%. We needed two-thirds, we've gotten over 95% for this article.
I've been asked by the executive secretary to, uh, where are you on whether or not you like the new format of the, of the warrant, of the warrant? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to it say nay. Does that mean secretary? All right. That concludes our, uh, our warrant. Hold on a minute, hold on, folks, don't get ahead of yourself. I know you want to go to the game. That concludes all the warrant articles. The, the moderator will entertain a motion to dissolve the warrant. Second. Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.